Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lyon County Planning Commission, Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person, and the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment. Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for a public comment. To unmute yourself, dial star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending us an email to karypage@kpage@lyon-county.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Be sure to type "public comment" in the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at 27 South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada, 89447, but all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Planning Commission within 24 hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Greg Honeywell Lyon County Commission Chambers, 27 South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and electronics in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. So first up is roll call. John Cassinelli? Okay. Audrey Allen?
Here.
Michael Carlson?
Here.
Sean Keating?
Here.
Loretta Sell?
Here.
Constantine Kuzmicke?
Here.
Okay, we have the quorum. So our first item, our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Connie, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the good life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust as for all.
Public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the Planning Commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked, are limited, speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The Commission reserves the right to reduce this three-minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the Chair to calendar the matter for a future Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The Chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until it, the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Okay, item four, review and adoption of agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at it? Any comments?
I mean, so we adopt the agenda?
I'll second that.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item five, approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at those? Does anyone have any comments or revisions?
I motion that we approve the minutes from February 8th, 2022.
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Presentation and reading of miscellaneous correspondence. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any Advisory Board reports? Okay, thank you. Moving on, public hearing items, 8A, for possible action. Patricia Riley, tentative parcel map request for a parcel map to subdivide a 79.96 acre parcel, zoned RR2T, rural residential, two acre minimum with trailer overlay into three parcels. The smallest proposed parcel being 26.33 acres in size located on Sunset Hills Drive, unaddressed Mason Valley, APN 014251-11 PLZ 2021-118. Is that yours, Rob?
Lewis.
Lewis, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I drew the short straw. For the record, Rob Pizell, Senior Planner. Andrew, do you have the PowerPoint up, or do you want to share a screen and let me show it?
I'll share the screen.
Thank you. So as the Chair noted, what you have before you is a request to subdivide a parcel that's slightly under 80 acres in size and size into three parcels through the tentative parcel map process. The parcel maps are the, those parcels range in size from 26.84 acres to 26.33 acres in size. It's currently zoned rural residential two with basically the second rural residential, minimum two acre parcel size with the T-trailer overlay. T-trailer overlay essentially is no longer utilized since the state required the local jurisdictions to allow manufactured homes for single-family residential properties. As you'll see in the staff report, the general location of the property is on the west side of Mason Valley.
Rob, you have the, you're now the host, so you can share your screen, sorry.
Not a problem, thank you. So I won't waste time and start all over again. Essentially, what you see now is the location of the proposed parcel map application, basically the, again, west side of 95A in Mason Valley, approximately a little over 1,300 feet south of the intersection of Camel Lane and Sunset Hills. You can see Sunset Hills Drive actually cuts through a portion of the property itself. Again, the size of the parcel, slightly under 80 acres in size. Sorry. Again, just a rundown of the proposed parcel sizes ranging from 26.84 acres to 26.33 acres, and then the zoning. The master plan land use designation for the site is rural residential. It's within the rural character district under the 2020 master plan update. Again, typically in the, for these properties, they're found in rural districts without municipal services, and the lot sizes tend to be, tend to be larger in size, acre to, all the way up to 20 acres in size for the rural residential designation. Again, the subject property is currently zoned RR2, again, second rural residential. We do, and we utilize Title 15 with properties that are still zoned under the Title 10 zoning designations, we use that Exhibit A, the zoning consistency matrix, and we utilize the rural residential two acre minimum, as noted in the, in the caption on the, on the right. The site is currently vacant and undeveloped. There is, as you can see in the aerial, existing development located to the east, single-family in size, again, accessed by Sunset Hills Drive. The property is located within the Xunshaded Zone per the FEMA Flood Panel Map, 32019C0705E, with the effective date of January 16, 2009. Here you can see how the applicant is proposing to split the parcels, again, the three parcels sizes and how the properties will be accessed, as well as the utility easements running through those. In the legend on the right, you can see the 24-foot wide access and PWE easements, the 60-foot wide Sunset Hills Drive easement, the five-foot perimeter access and public utility easements, maintenance easements, and then there is an existing 50-foot wide transmission line easement that runs through all three of the proposed parcels. Water will be available to the site via the city of Yarrington. They did provide a will cert letter that they can provide global water to the, to the parcels. Any future development reviewed by the county would again require confirmation of the city for water service if they subdivide the properties, and each lot, of course, will utilize individual sewer systems or septic systems, and those will be approved through the state as well as the county. But we did not receive any comments from the Mason Valley Fire Protection District. At this point, again, only single-family residential dwelling units are proposed, and they do have direct access to three properties via Sunset Hills Drive, and we did not receive any other comments for the application, with the exception of AT&amp;T. In looking at the review criteria, you'll note the, the staff report discussed each of these particular items. With that, we, we are recommending an approval based on the findings listed in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval as well. With that, I'll try to answer any, any questions. Thank you.
Audrey, do you have any questions for Rob?
No, I don't have any questions.
Loretta?
No.
No.
Sean?
Nope.
Connie? Okay, I actually don't either. I did have one question. What is to the west of that parcel?
That is, I believe, currently public land. You'll have managed public lands.
All right, is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? Come on up and-
Please come to the podium and sign your name.
I'm Patricia Riley. I'm the applicant. Followed the property for about 20 years. Bonnie, thank you. I had a question about the water hydrant at the north corner of the property, the northwest corner. It's not on the property. It's like 10 feet on the corner. And I was questioning why it wasn't on the property. Do you have an answer to that?
Rob, any ideas?
I did not clearly hear the question, actually. I apologize.
Okay, the hydrant for the city waters on the northwest corner of the property, but it's about 10 feet from the property line. And I would be responsible for bringing that line from the hydrant end of my property? I question why it isn't on the property. That's all.
Yeah. Most likely, it's located within the Sunset Hills Drive right-of-way. Typically, the utilities like to have their, their facilities within a public right-of-way so they don't disturb any improvements the person wants to place on their properties.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Lorraine Hanson.
Okay, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I'm Lorraine Hanson, and I'm, I'm the owner of that particular property. I paid the Morgan Family Trust in full on October 21st, 2020. And what is it? When I sold, was selling this property, I was not compensated for it. They, I had, the property had gone through escrow originally for $40,000. Buyer really wanted land next to his residence. He knew someone else was buying it, so he worked it out that the other piece of land, what he wanted was going to be his, regardless of what I said. He had me sign a letter that I didn't understand. He said it was to describe the property more accurately. He paid $100 a month for one year before paying in full, which was, when escrow closed, it promptly had been replaced by the property adjoining his house. Then parcel numbers and tax info changed. So I have not been compensated for the land, and so I kind of object right now until I get my due compensation.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on this matter?
No, it's, it's just that I'm willing to go along with it if I get my $40,000 that I feel is due to me.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a comment?
I have a question.
Okay.
So is the ownership of this land in question, then?
Rob?
Unfortunately, Connie's microphone is off, so I couldn't hear what she said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's debating the ownership of the property.
Yes, the ownership of the property in question.
And I understand that. We have a title report that indicates that the applicant is, in fact, property owner. If there is some action going on with the transfer of the property, that's a civil matter between the, the real estate agent and the current property owner and the past property owner. That's not something that we would consider in an application for a subdivision, as long as we have the signature of the current property owner and the application filing fees are completed.
Thank you, Rob. If there's no more public comment, then I'm ready to hear a motion.
All motion. Based on the aforementioned findings, 1 through 3, I move that Lyon County Planning Commission approve the tenant parcel map request for Patricia Riley, APN 014-251-11 PLZ 2021-118, subject to the following conditions of approval, 1 through 15.
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Connie was a nay. Any abstentions? Okay. Item 8B, for possible action. SP Farms LLC, Smith Valley Dairy, Dirk V. Lot, conditional use permit request for a conditional use permit on an approximately 80-acre parcel to allow for a manufactured home to be used for farm labor housing per LCC 15.351.3E within the RR5, fifth rural residential, 20-acre minimum zoning district located at 134 Burke Drive, Smith Valley, Nevada, APN 010151-15 PLZ 2022-124. Rob?
Thank you. Once again, for the record, Rob Pizell, Senior Planner. The subject site is located, it's an 80-acre parcel located at 134 Burke Drive. The site is located north of the Day Lane-Burke Drive intersection in Smith Valley. Again, assessor's information, you can see on the left-hand side, it's an 80-acre parcel. On the right-hand side, you can see the current ownership is SP Farms. They are doing business at Smith Valley Dairy, and the representative is Dirk V. Lot. The subject site is located in an Xunshaded Zone, as designated FEMA Firm Panel, 32019C075E, with, again, an effective date of January 16th, 2009. Subject site currently has, in addition to the agricultural operation going on, a single-family dwelling unit with several outbuildings associated with both the residential and the agricultural use on the subject site, as well as the agricultural use on the surrounding parcels under the same ownership. The master plan land use designation, in the update, it currently shows the subject site outlined in red in the exhibit as having the land use designation of agricultural. The surrounding parcels, you can see, are either the same designation or the rural residential land use designation. This is a scot shot of the 2010 comprehensive master plan that, again, indicates same land use designations on the proposed parcel, as well as the surrounding parcels. The current zoning on the property is RR5, that fifth rural residential, 20-acre minimum. Under Title 10, the surrounding properties are the same zoning, with the exception to the, to the west. You've got some RR3 parcels. Now, that RR5 zoning under the Title 10 translates into the RR20 Land Use and Development Regulations. In Table 15320-1, that's where we call out the allowed, the permitted, conditional, temporary and not permitted uses within the rural residential, commercial mixed-use, commercial and agricultural resource zoning districts under Title 15. And as you can see, highlighted in the, in the red panels, farm labor housing is a conditional use permit in the RR20 zoning district. The applicant is proposing to locate the manufactured home for the farm labor housing between the existing house and the garage located in the northwest portion of the subject site itself, the 80-acre parcel. The barn that you can see in the, with the lighter-colored roof between the single-family residence and the garage has been remoot, and their manufactured home will be placed in this area, as shown on the site plan that you can see now. Again, general location showing the proposed farm labor housing relative to the existing house and the existing garage. And looking at the surrounding adjacent land uses, both the existing and proposed, to the north, south, east, and west, it's a combination of agriculture and rural residential under the zoning. Again, as you can see in the zoning map, staff provided the, the existing zoning surrounding the site is RR5, and the current uses, again, are active agriculture and single-family residential within the surrounding parcels. So obviously, the, the use itself would be consistent with not only the application of the zoning district it's proposed in, wouldn't cause an adverse visual impact to the surrounding areas, given the agricultural and rural residential nature. The placement would not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, development of the surrounding properties or general neighborhood, and compatible with and preserves the character and integrity of the adjacent development neighborhoods, and includes improvements for modification on-site or within the public right-of-way to mitigate any development. The placement would not be detrimental to public health, safety, convenience, or welfare, and it would not result in material damage to the surrounding properties or other properties in the vicinity. And for that reason, we are recommending approval based on the findings and conditions as listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Rob. Audrey, any questions for Rob?
Pretty straightforward.
Michael?
Nope.
Sean?
None.
Connie?
Yes. This is just for the, I believe he's a veterinarian in his family. I'm sure the dairy employees, multiple employees were available. Now, is this possibly the first request? Will there be additional requests in the future, the use of agricultural land for housing?
Very well could. It very well could. There is an exemption within Title 15 and also under the federal regulations for agricultural use that allows for farm labor housing. As you could tell in looking at the staff report and looking at the findings, there are some specific conditions that have to be met in order for it to be placed on the property. There are some separation requirements included in Title 15 that don't allow for that intensification above and beyond what is allowed under, under the Land Use and Development Code. So there could potentially be other, other manufactured homes utilized as farm labor housing on other parcels that the property owner currently has. But again, they have to go through this process, and they have to demonstrate that they can mitigate any potential impacts to surrounding properties.
So basically, if another home was built on there, there would be another 80-acre site, or would this be limited?
No, it's, it's not limited. Again, this is why it's a conditional use permit. You have the ability to, in your case, recommend or approval or denial of the project. You can recommend additional conditions if you think additional conditions are necessary to mitigate the impacts of the proposed development. Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done these within Mason and Smith Valley for a number of years now, and at this point, we haven't had any issues with these.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
I'm Dirk V. Lot, owner of Smith Valley Dairy. Like you said, it is a employee of the dairy. He's married, he has three kids. All three kids go to Smith Valley School, and it's, there's already an existing garage there, so it kind of makes the perfect location for me to actually put an employee house. So that's the reason why we picked that location. Any other questions on any of that?
What if we have additional employees requesting housing in the area?
We actually tried to use the housing that we have, because we actually have quite a bit of housing there.
Okay.
And, but sometimes it gets hard, and if I can't find anything that's close by the dairy, this is my next option.
How many employees does the dairy have?
35 to 40.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Is, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for a motion.
I'll make that motion. I move that the Lyon County Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for a conditional use permit request by Smith Valley Farms LLC, Smith Valley Dairy, Dirk V. Lot, to allow placement of a manufactured home for farm labor housing on an approximately 80-acre parcel in the RR5, fifth rural residential, 20-acre minimum zoning district located at 134 Burke Drive, Smith Valley, Nevada, APN 01015515 PLZ 2022124, subject to the, how many conditions are there? Eight conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item 8C, for possible action. North Lyon LLC, NV Energy, PAR Electrical Contractors, conditional use permit request for a conditional use permit on an approximately 3.8 on an approximately three point eight three acre lease site located within a seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three acre parcel to allow for a new wireless telecommunications facility with a tower exceeding one hundred feet in height, one hundred and forty-five feet with the capability of rising to one hundred and ninety feet in height within the RR five fifth rural residential twenty acre minimum zoning district generally located northeast of State Route four thirty-nine, USA Parkway, Fernley, Nevada, APN zero two one four one one dash oh three, PLZ twenty twenty-one dash one one five. Rob?
Again, for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner. This is a request for a wireless communications facility that is way the hell and gone out there. As you can see on the location map shown on the slideshow, what the applicant is proposing is to create a three point eight three acre lease site located within an approximately seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three acre parcel. Again, it's generally located northeast of State Route four thirty-nine, USA Parkway. As you can see, this gives you a relative indication of the parcel's location relative to USA Parkway. The upper right hand or upper left hand property line is actually the the story line, county line. Again, giving you an indication of the size of the parcel, the acreage, and the current property owner on the left-hand side is the assessor's parcel map showing the the parcel itself. As you can see, the squiggly line in the lower right-hand portion of the assessor's page is the alignment of Ruby Avenue. The subject site is located, it's not only located outside of the floodplain, it's outside of, it's currently located in an area that's designated as excellent shaded. Again, you can see here the the easement that is going to be used to create the lease area, the three point eight three acre lease area and the access road easement that will be recorded to allow for the construction and maintenance of the facility. Again, to give you some sort of idea how remote the property is, we included these these two slides. The reference point is the the point of beginning for easement to the three point eight three acre lease parcel. You can see a bearing and direction, a bearing and distance of five hundred, excuse me, five thousand two hundred and eighty-one point eight one feet. That is an approximately, shows the location with the exhibit on the on the left-hand side. The beginning point is the the corner of sections nineteen, twenty, and thirty and twenty-nine. Again, the lease site area is located up on a higher point, a higher elevation. This example or this detail shows you some of the, some of the contour elevations and the slope there are within the existing area, but also gives you an idea of of the site and lease area relative to the overall size of the parcel. What the applicant is proposing for is again, a wireless communications facility or WCF. It does include a new antenna tower that is greater than a hundred feet in size or in height. It'll initially start out at a hundred and forty-five with possibility to extend to a maximum height of a hundred and ninety feet. In addition, it will have some, the typical electrical equipment, emergency generator associated with it. Again, electrical equipment shelter fourteen by twenty feet, two thousand gallon propane tanks with a five-foot-high ballistic wall and a sixty kilowatt propane backup generator along with a six-foot-high perimeter chain link fence with barbed wire for security and a twenty-foot entrance, twenty-foot-wide entrance gate into the into the lease area. Again, we want to emphasize this is an area that's difficult to get to. Approximate elevation is seven thousand two hundred and seventy-seven feet. Surrounding contour elevations, as you can see, show the steep topography of the of the areas surrounding the lease area. We did identify also the location of Ruby Avenue with the blue arrow located in the lower right-hand side of the exhibit. Again, as you recall, the exhibit, the exhibit showing the lease area easement, easement one is the access easement that will connect with Ruby Avenue and and allow for maintenance of the facility. Again, the approximate location of the the access to and from the site will be from Ruby Avenue and in Silver Springs to the subject site itself, fifteen-foot-wide non-exclusive access easement from the property owner is will connect the site to to US fifty. Both the twenty-ten and the twenty-twenty comprehensive, the twenty twenty ten comprehensive plan and the twenty-twenty update show the area, the subject parcel is having the land use designation of specific plan and cooperating planning area with the city of Fernley. We did reach out to the city of Fernley for any comments. We did not receive any. This area again, is currently zoned RR five, that fifth rural residential twenty acre minimum, as are the surrounding Lyon County parcels. Under the adopted Exhibit A, under Title Fifteen, you use the RR twenty Land Use and Development Regulations. Per table fifteen two thirty-six one, within the the WCF regulations, it does trigger for new towers to a forty-five-foot maximum height, does require the the type three review, which is the conditional use permit with the process we're going through now. The proposed tower height request does go what is beyond what is typically allowed through the type through review. However, the proposed tower height is necessary to support the N B Energy holding house substation need for two communication paths to allow for the remote control of the substation and line protection, given the topography distances between the control and the substation. To show the respective location of the facility, the lease parcel relative to USA Parkway and any other surrounding existing development. Again, you can show, you can see by this exhibit, straight line distance to the subject site from USA Parkway is three point two five miles as the crow flies. But as you remember, that existing topography makes it difficult to get to and would be difficult to see. Due to the topography and the existing expense or the expensive grading paths to create building, to create building paths for either residential or non-residential development in this area, we believe that this area will most likely be rezoned to resource land or non-irrigated agriculture in the future. And for this reason, we are, we consider this in our in our recommendation. As you can see, it does allow for higher than, greater than a hundred feet in height to go through the conditional use permit review as well. The requirements in in Title Fifteen two thirty-six say that additional fifty feet may be approved as part of the condition to use permit above the maximum height of forty-five feet. As long as there are condition, the additional height is necessary and substantiated by technical documentation that shows that additional height is necessary to provide the level of service as well as or to accomplish co-location. For that reason, we are recommending approval to allow them to go to that a hundred and forty feet with the ability to expand up to a hundred and ninety feet in height. We do have conditions of approval, recommended condition of approval that talk about the color of the facility. Concern with is that the height of the proposed tower could trigger FAA requirements. So the applicant is required through the recommended conditions of approval to have FAA review that. And if so, then they'll have to comply with the FAA requirements for colors as well as tower lighting. Setbacks are not going to be an issue with this particular property, given the lease area location and the boundaries of the property line. So the setbacks can be addressed. Tower spacing, again, this is the only tower in this facility and in this area that's being proposed at this time. Any new towers proposed in this general area, we would look at this tower spacing requirement. And then other requirements, they will need to provide as part of the building permit, documented project approval from state or federal agencies. And you'll note a condition of approval is included that addresses that, given the size of the proposed lease area and the grading that will be required. Lighting, I previously addressed, there'd be no lighting unless required by the FAA. They are proposing to provide security fencing surrounding the facility that addresses the six-foot minimum height. Noise, again, given the location of the lease area and the boundary properties, we don't believe that the noise is going to be an issue with regards to surrounding adjacent properties. And then proximity to airports, again, this will be reviewed by the FAA when they submit their their form for new construction to the FAA to address the tower height and painting and lighting. So with that, we do believe that the findings required for a conditional use permit can be met with this application. And for that reason, we are recommending approval based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Rob. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Rob?
I do want to, I do want to note, my apologies, I do want to note, we do have a representative from N B Energy, Mark Sullivan, on participating as well. So if you'd like to ask questions of him, he's quite knowledgeable and speaks quite well, much better than I do, so.
Thank you.
I have a question of of Rob. I really struggled with this one in the zoning. Because to me, it's not residential in nature, it's more, it fits more with the Fernley master plan as a specific plan. And while the acreage is seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three, his, the N B Energy contract or their lease is only for three point eight three acres. And so I can't see where this meets a twenty acre minimum. And I think
Again.
struggled with this too, Rob.
Again, for the record, Rob Pizel, it it does in fact, does comply with the twenty acre minimum. What the applicant is proposing is to develop a lease area as opposed to create a subdivision on the property. They were coming through with a parcel map, then they would be required to meet that twenty acre minimum. They are not. They are creating a lease area, a singular development area within this seven thousand plus acre parcel. It is a wireless communications facility. They have no need for twenty acres to create a twenty acre parcel. So the the difference is, is you're not looking at a subdivision of land. You're looking at a land use, which again, does not require twenty acres to to develop. It only requires that minimal area to allow for the construction of the antenna tower and the associated electrical equipment, emergency generator, and then the emergent, the fuel for the emergency generator.
Thank you, Rob.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for Rob or the applicant? Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
I think he said there was a representative too.
Yes, would would the applicant's representative like to speak?
Mark is smart, he tends not to speak if he doesn't feel there are questions he needs to answer.
Okay.
Hi, Plan Commission, and Rob's giving me more credit than I deserve. I'm Mark Sullivan with N B Energy. And actually, there's just two things, and I apologize in advance to Rob for not getting in touch with him beforehand to discuss this because I'm sure we would have been able to work it out. But there's two conditions, condition number four and condition number seven. And condition four typically are telecom towers are galvanized and they they dull out over time and get kind of a gray color. Our dishes are light gray with white faces, and I'm not exactly sure about the dishes themselves if we can paint those. But the staff report, like Rob said, is a, it has a color green in there. And so I would ask that you guys would consider allowing it just to be the galvanized, the gray and with the white faces on the dishes. And then also, condition seven, our application wasn't wasn't correct when we submitted it. And Rob had mentioned that six-foot fence with one foot of barbed wire, but our fences, we've just upped them to seven feet with one foot of additional barbed wire because we're finding out that people can back a truck up and get over a six-foot fence with some barbed wire pretty easily. That one extra foot actually makes a difference. So if you guys would consider that. Now, the staff report also says that you guys can yield to them and that they can work those things out. But I just wanted to bring them up just so you're aware of it. And and lastly, you know, I just want to mention, we had hired a third-party contractor to do this permit and build the site, and it didn't go as well as it could have. So actually, N B Energy stepped in and to complete the process. And I just want to point out how awesome the staff, both the planning and the building department have been. I mean, I've always enjoyed working with them, but this this really got messy. And they've helped us work through the issues and get back on track. And I mean, just very professional and and I really appreciate Bull, Sean, and Rob, and then of course, the other office staff too, they've been fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob, do you have any comments on that, with those changes?
I just want to tell Mark that I will give him those fifteen bucks for praising me like that. With regard to to condition four, no, staff doesn't have a concern, given the remoteness of this of this facility and the inability for the general public to to see this from any public right-of-way. Honestly, the coloring is not a concern. And with regard to condition number eight, the security fence, I think our requirement is a minimum six-foot high. So if they exceed that, I think we're fine.
Thank you. Any more questions by the commissioners? Any public comment? I guess we're ready for a motion. Yes.
Please, please speak into the microphone.
Approval, the request by North Lyon LLC and the Energy for a conditional use permit to allow on approximately three point eight three acre lease site within the approximately seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three acre parcel to construct and place a new wireless communication facility with a new lattice tower exceeding a hundred feet in height, a hundred and forty-five feet with the ability to preach to a hundred and ninety feet in height within the RR five fifth rural residential twenty acre minimum zoning district located northeast of State Route four thirty-nine, US USA Parkway, Fernley, Nevada, APN zero two one dash four one one, there's zero three PLZ dash two zero two one dash one one five, subject to the conditions as listed below and amended as the information given as the color and size.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, item eight D for possible action, Larry and Rhonda Sell tentative parcel map. Request for a parcel map to subdivide a forty-nine point six five acre parcel zoned RR three T rural residential five acre minimum with trailer overlay into two parcels. The smallest proposed parcel being five acres in size located at eight thousand Snafu Way, Stagecoach, APN zero one five dash three seven one dash three zero, PLZ dash twenty twenty-two dash one two zero. APN 015-371-30PLZ-2022-120.
Yes, thank you. Again, for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner. The project site. As you can tell, is located in Stagecoach on the south side of US 50. Highlighted by the blue arrow on the left hand side. The applicants are the cells, the parcel is approximately just under 50 acres in size. Access is currently via Blockhead, Blackhawk Road, which connects to US 50. That connects the subject site to US 50, and then Snap who drive extended approximately the middle of the subject parcel. And connects to Blackhawk Road via Wrong Way. Which provides that access on to US 50 that's required. The applicant is proposed to subdivide the property into two parcels. Proposed parcel one is five acres, proposed parcel two will be the remnant 44.65 acres. Property is currently zoned RR3T, again, third rural residential. Minimum five acre lot with a trailer overlay. Again, that trailer overlay is, is no longer necessary because of the state legislation. Regarding manufactured homes, counting a single family residential in any residential zoning district, subject to specific requirements. As you can see in the, in the exhibit, the subject site is currently designated as specific plan within the 2020. Master plan with a rural character designation. The zoning on the property again is RR3, it converts over for the Exhibit A zoning consistency matrix to. The RR5 zoning for land use and development requirements. The RR5 again does have that minimum five acre parcel size. The subject site in its current development phase, you can see, does have a single family residence on the property. Does have a metal barn and associated parking areas for motor vehicles. As you can see in the area circled, there are accessory storage occurring on the property itself, with building materials in that northern area. Off to the left. The subject site itself is within the, the X unshaded zone per the FEMA flood panel. And the proposed subdivision of the property is shown in this exhibit. Again, the remainder parcel two of 44, slightly over 44 acres in size. Parcel one off to the right, meaning that minimum five acre requirement for the parcel map, the subdivision of the property. And you'll see highlighted the various access to the property from US 50. As well as an internal 50 foot wide access and public utility easement. That allows for access to proposed parcel one out to the existing street system. And sending out the application for comments, Stagecoach GID did decline to extend water services to this site. It's outside of the current service boundaries. So any future development of a single family residential on the, on the property per the zoning would require individual wells. As well as individual septic systems. The county road department did request that a 50 foot wide easement, public utility easement when constructed, needs to be in accordance to county standards. That is included as a specific condition. The assessor's office also noted that there should be a private maintenance agreement for the 50 foot wide easement as well. And that's concluded in a condition. Louis did want to note that condition two include an error, an error by incorrectly stating Cardon Lane. And noted that it should be corrected to Stanford Drive, condition 11 included an arrow stating Mason Valley Fire Protection District. And the proposed change to the, to that condition to revert it to the Central Lion County Fire Protection District. And then page seven. Incorrectly states capital disposal is the solid waste provider. It's actually waste management. But that I believe has changed just recently by action of the Board of Commissioners. Chapter 15, 606, oh seven does, lists out the review criteria for the planning commission and the board to consider under parcel maps. We do believe that all of these have been addressed as part of the application, the staff report. And for that reason, we are recommending approval based on the findings. And the subject to the conditions of approval as amended. With that, we'll try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Rob on this? Connie?
Oh yeah, so I received some public comment on that, and we got pictures of the road conditions. Talking about public safety. One of the items mentioned was, you know, the mapping's horrible. The mapping's a mess, people are getting lost. Even the National Guard came out to deliver COVID supplies, they got lost. The road conditions are deplorable when it rains or other inclement weather. I mean, it makes it impossible, people speed on the road, there's no. Signs, dust is flying all over and the people who probably work somewhere in the back where I believe they assemble trailers or something. And there's just a blatant disregard for the environment. And the public safety of the people in the neighboring area.
Is, is there a question of staff or is that just a?
It's a comment.
Okay. What I can address is, is. The following, we, we, staff takes the application and we disseminate it to the reviewing agencies. What the applicant is proposing comports with the development standards for a rural character. And a rural zoned piece of property. They are providing access to county maintained roads to provide that connection to the state highway that is required. We understand there are adjacent. Primitive roads. That are not county maintained, that certain. Residents within Stagecoach would like to see fixed by this parcel map. Unfortunately, what this parcel map will do will add one single family residence to the existing neighborhood. And they are appropriately addressing access to this lot. Through the mechanisms allowed by state and county regulations. The concern that staff has with regards to some of the comments. And some of the insinuations that the county should. Require this applicant to improve other accesses in this area. Is above and beyond what is. Necessary for the development subdivision of this property and. Would be. On the border of requiring this applicant to do things that. Could be in a court of law be. Discussed as being a takings on the property, requiring the applicant to do above and beyond. What they do to meet the minimum standards for access. We certainly understand the concern in the area with regards to. Development, but we also understand that. The applicants or the, the property owners within Stagecoach are quite adamant about maintaining their rural character. And rural character means, in some cases, non-maintained roads. And in some cases, primitive roads. We do have the. Director or the, the road department director attending. If you'd like to ask him questions, I'm sure he'd. Be unhappy to, to discuss, but that's only because he, he doesn't like to talk in public. But the applicant through this process has addressed the minimum requirements for access. And will improve that access to the, the current county standards.
How many people use that road on a daily basis during the work week?
Well. I don't, I don't know right off the top of my head.
Hi, this is Dustin, Line County Road Director for the record. So which, which road exactly are you referring to?
Well, I'm looking at these pictures, there's a bunch of different roads leading to that property. And it looks like all four wheel drive material to me. I mean, the road, the roads are dirt, they're not maintained, it's, it's a mess.
Rob, could you bring up, or if you're still in control, can you bring up? Picture of that parcel up again? So, so these, these roads in that area, we don't really do traffic counts on. We did improve Snafu Drive down. Basically to the end to the private property a few years ago, just to gravel road standard. We do blade it occasionally with our road graders. And I believe Blackhawk off of Highway 50, if that's the access is, it is maintained, it's. It's actually grindings with some chip seal on that, that portion up to the corner. That is maintained by Line County. There's a lot of other roads around there that. Are just. Roads that people are using across parcels. That are out of Line County's control, they're not county roads, so. We have no authority over those.
Thank you. Does any, any of the other commissioners have questions? Did you want to speak, Jeff?
Morning, Jeff Page, County Manager for the Record. So is, if I understand the item correctly, the applicant is requesting to. Subdivide approximately 50 acres. Into two parcels, smallest being five acres in size, is that correct?
Yes.
And then we're going to put one home on one of those. So I don't want to be. Well, it doesn't make difference what I want to be. Other sound like the drift that I'm going to sound like. So I had listened to the planning commission for 12 years now, talk about maintaining a rural lifestyle that we have in Lion County. If somebody wants to build a house out in the middle of nowhere, it's a crappy road, they want to get there. That's their choice, we're not going to maintain it, I'm going to tell the applicant right now. And at least in my career, we'll probably never maintain that road. That may change as time goes on, the county gets more, more population moves in. But we're never going to maintain that road, if it takes some full drag to get in and out. Then they know that going into the operation. Lion County has maintained for a good number of years, as well as the state of Nevada, that property rights are to be considered. A commodity that we should not infringe upon unless absolutely necessary. Board of County Commissioners, for what my last four years doing this job, and my last 37 years of the county is pretty much maintained that, that philosophy. So I, I don't know that traffic of one home is going to cause a problem with this community. I've read through the public comment, I understand people's concerns, will they do it and somebody else is going to do it? We don't get, we don't get to make those decisions as to what happens in the future. It's only based upon the decisions that before us today, the applications before us today. So I strongly urge the planning commission, follow the recommendations of the staff. And if not, then address the issues as to, as to what the staff report says for denial and not just go off the. Real life traffic, that it gets us into more trouble than anything else, thank you.
Thank you. Sean, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Michael? I'm good.
Loretta? Audrey? Is, there is the applicant here?
I'm Rhonda Selle, my husband Larry and I.
Please write your name too, please.
Own the property at 8,000 Snafu, we're splitting five acres off for one of our boys to live there. We currently have four employees coming in every morning, two of them live on Silver Lake. They have approximately a half an acre or a half a mile commute, so it's, it's worked out really well for us. I was surprised that there's so much negativity about this, considering that where we live, everyone knows everyone. If they have a problem with someone driving too fast, come and talk to us. We've had a business for nine years, have not had any moving violations, have never had a speeding ticket. So if someone has some concerns, please come and talk to us. Having my son live close to us is exactly why we live in Nevada. We, the pictures that you have of the roads coming in are off of Sand Dune, not Snafu, Blackhawk or Wrong Way. Are there some times that when it's muddy and whatnot on our property is an issue? Yeah, so we correct it. I'm not asking the county to, nor am I asking, you know, our neighbors to quit doing what they're doing. So pretty much in a nutshell, I would love to have the kids live next to us, that's why we live, that's why we have 50 acres, so that we can have that.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for them? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Amanda Bernand for the record. And I just want to say that I don't support this proposed subdivision of the two separate parcels. And it does tie in with the non-maintained roads and road issues. I live on Silver Lane and that road does not intersect Snafu or Wrong Way, but it may be impacted by this parcel subdivision. Although not included on the staff report, there is an additional access point for the proposed parcel number one. Which is an unnamed dirt road that ties into Sand Dune Drive. Silver Lane intersects Sand Dune, so this could all directly impact the Silver Lane residents. Both Silver and Sand Dune are identified as non-maintained county roads. I don't know the status of Snafu or Wrong Way, because I couldn't find either of them on the county roads inventory. But I am guessing by their washboard condition that they are also non-maintained roads. So I'm, I moved here 25 years ago, Silver Lane was in relatively good condition, had minimal traffic. And the non-maintained status of this road wasn't an issue. But as the years increased, the traffic has as well, especially in the recent years, and especially on Snafu and Wrong Way. Silver and Sand Dune are native material dirt roads, Snafu and Wrong Way are gravel roads, but they are washboarded and much of the gravel is now on the side of the roads. Also not included in the staff report as this, this property does operate a commercial construction business. And as they said, they do have employees coming in and out of this location. And. So this is not just a normal residential traffic that is going to this location, you already have increased traffic from their employees. And although some of the vehicles do go the speed limit or slower, there are many that do far exceed the speed limit. And I can actually see the dust welling up from my home. The excessive, excessive use and speeds is causing washboard roads and excessive dust in this residential area. And I have spoken with some of these speeders, I don't know if they're the ones that are employed by them, but I have spoken to some of them. And asked them to slow down, some of them do slow down, but some of them have stated that there's no speed limit posted, so that means there is no speed limit. I am aware this is inaccurate and it is 25. Before the lots are allowed to be subdivided, this non-maintained road issue needs to be discussed and a resolution determined. Our population is growing and this is going to be, come to a head sooner or later. I, I do believe that, I, I did supply the written comments and all the pictures of Sand Dune. Which does seem to indicate that bringing a road up to county standards has occurred in the past with a partial subdivision, although I'm not sure of this. And as I said, there are no speed limit signs on the roads. Although this is only one additional residence. What about the next one, or the one after that, or the one after that that comes before the board? These non-maintained roads cannot support these increasing traffic loads, let alone the excessive dust from the speeding vehicles. And this issue needs to be addressed by the county before any lots are allowed to be subdivided. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Okay, seeing no more public comment, ready for a motion.
Almost, oh, go ahead.
All motion, based on the aforementioned findings, one through three, I move that Lyon County Planning Commission approved the tentative parcel. Map request for Larry and Ron to sell, APN zero one five dash zero three, or zero, dash three seven one. Dash zero, or guess, I keep wanting to throw a zero on, dash three zero. PLZ twenty twenty-two dash one twenty, subject to the following conditions of approval, one through eighteen.
Hold second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item eight E for possible action, Lyon County Master Plan Amendment. Request for a master plan amendment to change the land lease use designation. On Dayton Land Use Map from suburban residential to public quasi-public for three parcels. Totalling approximately one oh two point seven one acres, generally located six hundred Dayton Valley Road. APNs zero one six three five one dash sixteen, zero one six three five one dash seventeen. And zero one six three six one dash sixty, PLZ twenty twenty-one dash one oh four. Rob?
Once again, for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner. This is a county-initiated master plan amendment application to change the current land use designation from suburban residential to public quasi-public. Facility for three parcels. The three parcels are APN zero one six three fifty-one sixteen. Zero one six three fifty-one seventeen and zero one six three sixty-one sixty. The three parcels total approximately a hundred and two point seven one acres in size. They're currently vacant, undeveloped. And located on the north side of Dayton Valley Road between Palmer Drive and Quail Ridge Road in Dayton. The assessor's maps are included, showing the, the largest partial, largest parcel. Sixty is forty-eight, slightly over forty-eight acres in size. The parcel seventeen is right at thirty-two acres. And then parcel sixteen is slightly over twenty-two acres in size. All three parcels were acquired as part of the Great Recession when the, the previous property owners failed to pay taxes. The properties were then acquired by the county. So access to the property, as we noted, is directly off of Dayton Valley Road. Minor Ranch Road runs through the property to provide access to the, the miners. Miners Ranch. The properties, all three parcels were located within the X-I'm shaded zone. As noted on the firm panel, thirty-two oh one nine C zero two nine three E, with the effective date of one twenty twenty sixteen. Public facilities in the area, there is, it is within the water and sewer service area of Lyon County Utilities Department. And there are existing infrastructure located within Dayton Valley Road. The properties currently are, as noted earlier, have that suburban land use, suburban residential land use designation. This designation allows residential densities in the suburban category ranging from three dwelling units per acre. Basically nine thousand square foot lots to eighteen dwelling units per acre, which is the, the multifamily. Development. There is no change in this land use designation from the twenty-ten comprehensive master plan. Since the adoption of the twenty-twenty update. The suburban residential, again, just showing you the range that are allowed, SR nine thousand, NR, MFR. And then MHP, which is the manufactured home park, where the Title X zoning designations. Title fifteen, again, similar, the, the NR zoning designation and the RMU and the PUD. That range of three dwelling units to eighteen dwelling units per acre, and you can see under the description characteristics and examples of uses. It is a suburban character and neighbor, municipal. Infrastructure is utilized for water and sewer, tends to have pedestrian connectivity. And those amenities that you, that you look for in a suburban development. Current zoning on the property, all three parcels is NR one. That zoning under the. Conversion to the Title fifteen allows for forty-five hundred square foot, single-family residential lots. In addition, this area is also under the design guidelines of the Lakes of Dayton Valley Plan Unit Development. This has these three parcels, as well as the minor parcel to the east designated as age-restricted, single-family residential development. So the proposed master plan application seeks to convert the current land use designation from suburban to, to. Public and quasi-public. This is in order to move forward with a future zoning map amendment application. To change the current zoning on the properties from high-density residential with age-restricted, single-family residential development. For the, the lakes of Dayton Valley, to allow the parcels to be developed into a governmental center. This is a reaction to the recent state legislation. The existing Dayton Justice Court in Old Dayton is no longer suitable. And we have to provide for another courtroom facility. In addition, we have, the county has several departments that have a presence in Dayton, but are scattered throughout. This would allow, this action would allow for the start of the development of a new justice center. To address recent state legislation, the various civil court cases, having jury trials, as well as consolidate some of the county's departments into one centralized location. This is the block from the twenty-twenty master plan update that shows that various uses allowed within. The, the PF zoning or PF land use designation, that includes government offices, buildings. Facilities, fire stations, electrical substations, wastewater treatment plants, et cetera. Again, facilities that are for the public. We do believe that these are the master plan goals, policies and strategies who would be met with this, again. Within a suburban area, you would typically find these types of government buildings. The infrastructure, the services are currently in place that would allow for this type of development. We also look at the adjacent land uses. Again, to the north, you've got suburban residential, open space, public and quasi-public facility. The character is suburban. In all directions, the zoning, you can see it ranges from NR one to RR five on the Minor Ranch. C one, NR one in the, the areas to the east and to the south. And then to the west, you've got the NR one, NR one lakes. Dayton Valley PUD. You've got the, for development, you've got areas that are currently undeveloped, like the Bolton Property. The Point Legato subdivision, which is currently under development, and then the Qualesey Ranch, which has some of that. E one zoning as well, similar to the. Minor Ranch. We believe that the proposed amendment would address change in conditions with regards to what has gone on with the state legislature. As well as allow for consolidation accounting functions. So we do believe with the rest of the findings that are required for a master plan amendment. That the Planning Commission could find, make findings to recommend approval of the master plan amendment to the Board of County Commissioners. And with that, we'll try to answer any questions.
Jeff, would you like to speak? Audrey, do you have any questions?
Yeah. I'm kind of concerned with some of the comments that came in. You know, and I think this is an awesome project. I support it. You know, it's something that's needed and I really think it's fantastic. That the county is looking at building a facility, a centralized facility like this in Dayton. It's needed. But the advisory board or the, the citizens in Dayton have not had a chance to really participate. In asking questions and getting their questions answered before you've come to this place, you know, before the planning commission. I think that's really critical. I think it's best if you get the community behind you. You know, when you're going forward with this, and one of the big questions that always comes up with anything on the other side of the river is the bridge and more traffic. You know, and so I think more discussion needs to happen. I would recommend that we do a continuance. So that you allow that to happen.
I don't know how many more questions I have to ask.
I know.
So I, and I'll express my frustration. Lyon County is in a perpetual state of not my backyard.
I know.
And so the Planning Commission today is being asked to recommend or deny, recommend approval or denial of a master plan amendment. Or you can, you can make a, a motion to send it back for a period, what, thirty days? That is hard up to the planning. We have, I believe, have done everything humanly possible to explain we're building a courthouse. The Justice Court, Sheriff's Office, the DA's office and Human Services. I don't know what else to, to explain. The bridge, it's going to be an issue. Those same people that are complaining about us not having a bridge are also, many of them are also the same people that don't want the second bridge. Because if we allow the second bridge, then we're going to allow more developments to come in into the Dayton Valley area. So between a rock and a hard spot and what we do here, what I can tell you is this. If I can't utilize this property in the future for the courthouse, then we are going to spend significant more dollars, taxpayers' dollars. By either buying property or going through the process of remodeling a historic building, so it's no longer historical. To meet the needs of the Supreme Court, as well as the state legislature, provide court services to the community of Dayton. We're also going to continue paying significant amounts of dollars every month for leased. Space for the Sheriff's Office and Human Services, because there are no buildings in place for us to purchase to provide those services. So, and I'm not here to, to. Blackmail the, the Planning Commission is making a decision. I'm just stating the facts of where we are. We bought this property back in two thousand and eleven. It was somewhat incorrect. It wasn't due to back taxes. The, the bank that owned it said, we don't want it. Here's the price we were willing to take for it, which was sixty thousand dollars in change, plus we had to go through all the escrow stuff, so. Cost the taxpayers about eighty thousand dollars. That was in two thousand and eleven. And the Board of County Commissioners had determined at that point in time, that's where we would be building future county operations. We are in the process of working on. Planning and building a second bridge access. The Board of County Commissioners probably in April. Will be addressing which location, the Chas Lane location or the Cardelli location. And that becomes problematic because you've got people on both sides. Who either A, don't want the bridge, or don't want it wherever it's being proposed, correct? So the, and if you, if this was approved by the Board of County Commissioners today. The words is okay, yep, the master plan's approved, planning commission recommended approval. We're talking three to five years before construction even begins on this project. Because unlike what people believe that we do, we don't bond construction. Mr. Carlson is going to attest to the process we went through to build the justice complex. We spent, we saved our money until we could afford the twenty-four and a half million dollars to build nine eleven Harvey Wood. That is what the county is doing currently right now for the Dayton Justice Complex, Dayton Courthouse, excuse me. Is saving our money until we can build that. We are currently in preliminary design, trying to figure out from the courts, the sheriff's office. Human services and the DA's offices, what their needs are, so we can have this basic schematic of what we need. We plan on building, if possible, a single-story building, because every building that's in multiple story, elevators cost more money to maintain. So we've looked at every aspect of how to make this thing fiscal, fiscally responsible, so that we're not increasing the cost of the operation. We did look at other properties on the other side of the river. The cheapest was six million dollars. That was the property between Carson Medical Center and Central Lyon County Fire Station thirty-five. Six million dollars. If I spent that today, I'm waiting ten years to build that building. It does not fix my fault with the justice court. I mean, the challenge is, so everybody understands the justice court problem is. The Supreme Court of the state of Nevada has determined that if you get arrested for domestic battery. You are now entitled to a trial, because if you're convicted, your Second Amendment rights may be greatly diminished. Therefore, it requires a trial by jury. When I first started in the Sheriff's Office nineteen eighty-five, every misdemeanor was subject to a jury trial. That went away, and now the Supreme Court is ruled this. The court is backlog with jury trials, trying to get something set up so that they can do jury trials. So we are, we're facing, not only in Dayton, the same thing is true in the Canal Township up in Fernley. We're facing those struggles as well. Is how we're going to do this and get this accomplished. So I understand the community's concerns. We've been upfront. We've been, talked to people. We put things all over social media, all over our website about what is, we're looking at, at bill. I don't know what else, how else to answer their questions. People, how many people are there going to be there?
I don't care.
Between thirty and a hundred and fifty.
Just saying, if you had a presentation, you know, where it was a community meeting. Where you went and answered a lot of these questions, made a presentation, you know, letting them know this. We looked at other sites. It's going to be three to five years. You know, where we want to do this, we have the land available, give the community all that information at this meeting. Then you've had this meeting to address.
Already done that.
Really? I wasn't aware of it.
I've been to a number of, of groups in the Dayton community for the last four years discussing this very issue. Explain what we're going to be doing.
I wasn't aware.
For the record, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director. I'd also like to address the, the traffic issue that was brought up. This use is significantly less impactful than what is currently allowed there, which is forty-five hundred square foot lots. You could put about nine homes on a, an acre with a forty-five hundred square foot. Zoning designation, so do the math, nine times a hundred, that's quite a few. That's rough math, because you got to account for public space and, and roads and whatnot, but I just want to throw that out there, that the number of. Trips per day, I guess, is going to be significantly less with the, with the. Previous zoning.
Thank you.
I do want to clarify one thing for the Planning Commission. So prior to COVID, we participated in a number of town hall meetings in the Dayton area. Addressing a variety of things going on in the Dayton community. This was one of those things. I will tell you that in the last two years, though, there's been no movement because of the COVID issue. So some of these people may be new, but some of them, I'm reading their comments, and I know who they are, and they were present at those discussions.
Thank you, thank you. Loretta, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Michael?
I'm good.
Sean?
Yeah, I do have a, I do have a question and maybe a comment. So Jeff, a while back ago, we were looking at property, the county was looking at property over by the fire station. Did that ever go through, or did that just kind of not become feasible?
Six million dollars.
And then my.
Versus, versus a property I already own.
And, and then my comment would be, you know, the master plan amendment is just saying this is allowable use that we want to recognize for that area. That's what the master plan amendment, we're not, there's no conditions. It's just, are we saying is that allowable place for this to actually go? I believe with the schools in that general area, the reduction of traffic by creating a governing complex, vices of residential buildups. You know, high density development, you are in the intentions of what the master plan is trying to do here, is we're looking at the use. And that's what we're here today, saying is this a suitable use for that property that we already own? So that was my, my comment.
Thank you. Connie, do you have any questions for Jeff?
I, I would like to address the, the traffic concern, because I, I understand that to be a, a very big concern. Here, here's the reality, between the Sheriff's Office, the court and Human Services, I don't know that the DA's office gets a lot of foot traffic. Not many people go to visit the attorney if they're being, they're a suspect in a crime, right? So it's, it's generally speaking, the Sheriff's Office, the courts, Human Services. Based upon their, their daily counts, a commander, their offices on an individual basis. We're looking at between thirty to a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people. That hundred and fifty is going to be, is a high number on significant court days at Justice Court. So the days that she does all of her traffic, I, I mean, the justice piece, all of her traffic cases, whichever it is Wednesday. And you're probably going to see a whole lot more people, although that's changing now, because the most traffic violations are no longer a crime. There are civil infractions, so that's being handled a little bit differently. So. So those numbers are going to go up and down based upon what happens in the future. And again, I can't give you, I can give you what today is. I don't know what it looks like in three to five years when we actually have this thing built. And with what technology the courts are using currently for people to be able to participate in court via sitting in the comfort of their own home by computer. So some of those things are changed drastically. The human services numbers are pretty much going to stay the same. They have this about the same client flow on a daily basis, and the sheriff's office number is going to go up and down depending what's, what's going on in the community. For the most part, the sheriff's office in Dayton is specifically dealing with business registration, brothel registration. You see once or twice a week, a high number, because the rookie girls are coming in to get their work parts. I don't know what, Michael, ten to twenty at the time, maybe.
Yeah, usually Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, when they're at the peak. So those are, are constant. Where if this were a business or something else, it's a little more difficult to judge what those numbers look like, where we're able to kind of give you an idea between, let's say, between thirty and a hundred and fifty, depending on what's going on.
Madam Chair, just one more. Okay, so this has to do, you say three to five years, and I know you're working on the bridge. So, you know, just as the planning commission, where each time a project comes up on that side of the river, the bridge always is an issue. More traffic, you know, this is going to impact our traffic. And so that's something that's before us all the time. Where do these two line up? Do you think, you know, three to five years for this project?
I would anticipate, and I always be honest with you, I would anticipate that if, if we were start, start construction today, it would take us two years to have the building done, right? Building or buildings, depending on how we set it up. You're probably looking at between five and seven years, if I had the funding and the bridge location in place, and all the right of ways and easements in place I needed to build. I, I can build the bridge today. But I don't want to be Congress to build the bridge nowhere. Right? I have to have a road network to support that bridge. So if you look at the master plan, it envisions at Chavs, the coming around and tying into Lake Boulevard and potentially into Dayton Valley Road. That is for me, the more expensive part than the actual build, construction of the bridge. If we voted the Chavs, it's one and a half span, so it's two thousand eight numbers, that was about a million bucks a span, so you're probably looking at three and a half, four million dollars to build just a bridge. And we have to build the road network to support that, which more likely is going to have to be a, a four lane road going around to, to Lake Boulevard. Well, why do I want to do that? Well, the reality of it is, we want to do that is to keep truck traffic off Dayton Valley Road to go to the industrial park. Nobody in this room today designed what Dayton is.
I know.
We only get to work with what we have. And so if I had to do it all over again, we probably would not have put an industrial park right next to a residential park, right? But that's what we have. So we have to figure out how we work with it and make it better for the citizens who are out there, so they don't have to deal with the, the traffic going into their, their backyard and their front yard, trying to move that process forward. So I'm looking at, if, if everything was to go as planned, and we had the funding in place, we're looking at five to eight years before we see the actual construction of the bridge and the completion of the road network.
Thank you.
And that is if the board decides on which location to go. If we do Cardelli, now we're looking a little bit longer time break, because that's a twelve and a half span bridge.
Does any, do you have any questions for Jeff? We're over here. Any questions for Jeff? Connie? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment. If you want to speak on this issue, you'll get three minutes timed, and you only get to get up and speak once. So please make sure you have your thoughts in order before you get up here, and please write your name on the lectern and state your name for the record. Do we have any online, Andrew?
I don't see any.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, I guess we're ready for a motion.
All motion. Based on the aforementioned findings, I move that Lyon County Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners for the Master Plan Amendment. Request by Lyon County to change the land use designation from suburban residential to public quasi, public facility for the three parcels located on the north side of Dayton Valley Road. Dayton, Nevada, A P M zero one six dash three five one dash one six, zero one six dash three five one dash one seven. And zero one six dash three six one dash six zero, P L Z two zero two one dash one oh four.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Opposed. Just, I like the project. I like the concept. I'm not opposed to any of that. I just think that a continuance would be in order. Any abstentions? Okay, seeing none, we will recess to convene as the Lyon County Public Lands Management Board. And does anybody need to take a break before we get into this? We're going to take a five-minute break. Before we get going, were you wanting to speak, Jeff? Okay. Okay, number nine, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. So if you have something to speak about public lands, this is your chance.
Record Jim Kinninger, resident of Smith Valley. I'm here to talk about the current lands bill that Lyon County is in the process of putting together. As you know, Land Bill actually uses an act of Congress to transfer public land to local government. In morally responsible cases, the Land Bill requests lands for needs of maybe the fire department or a park, a solid community need. However, in this case, the county will be offering some of our public lands for sale to mining companies for a huge profit. This is the plan underway with Hud Bay Minerals and other smaller mining companies in Smith Valley. Under such a bill, the mining company converts their mining claims on federal land into private property. That change of ownership takes them out of the oversight of the B L M. Thus, they are no longer required to do an environmental impact statement. All we have to do is to look down the street, see the Anaconda Mine. What lack of oversight does. And Hud Bay says their new mine would be nine or ten times larger than Anaconda. The groundwater under the Anaconda Mine and its tailings is polluted with uranium and arsenic. Thankfully, we have stronger environmental laws that have been enacted since the Anaconda Mine started. These laws protect citizens and the environment from the type of pollution caused by open pit mining. We need that protection. Simply put, the county government sees a lands bill as cash cows and not the interest of the citizen. Who will have to live with these mines and their impact for generations. Ask the hard questions today at this presentation. Why wasn't this plan brought to the community of Lyon County in the town hall meeting or contracted with resource concepts to put together a lands bill? Why were the citizens of Smith Valley included in stakeholder's meeting and invited to the one and only share stakeholder's meeting that's been? Why is our county government putting profit over public safety?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Sonae, also from Smith Valley. At recent public meetings, the county manager has spoken about miscommunication in the community regarding the lands bill. He says there is no lands bill, and there's no secret squirrel stuff going on. Okay. Here's what concerned neighbors in Smith Valley are sharing with other neighbors. We tell them there is a lands bill being proposed and currently being drafted. That Hud Bay has requested a significant amount of acreage, as per email from Hud Bay. But the county had only one stakeholder meeting for entities to learn how to ask for the property to be included. It was invitation only. Hud Bay was included. Smith Valley residents and entities were not. These are all facts, not miscommunications. We have encouraged our neighbors to review the information regarding the reduced oversight of a mine operating on private lands and to reach out to the county and commissioners, if they also believe it to be devastating, to transfer public land to a mining entity. There's no secret squirrel stuff on our end. Until Hud Bay retracts their request, or the county removes Smith Valley land from mining entities from the proposed lands bill. You will continue to hear from Smith Valley residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Fullstone. I am a resident of Smith Valley. My family is the one that owns the majority of the permits that are in the area that the lands bill is being considered for. We run about seven hundred head of cattle out of there. It's our winter grazing feed for five months. If this land bill goes into place and it becomes public land, we will lose five months of grazing, which is seventy percent of our feed for our cattle in winter. That would effectively put us out of the ranching business. I've been here my entire life. I'm seventh generation. We got these permits back in nineteen thirties during the Taylor grazing act. So please consider the impact to the agricultural community and the farmers and ranchers that are out here that are also making a livelihood off of this land. I'm in my thirties, and I have committed my life to running my family's business. What am I supposed to do if half of our business no longer exists? There is not other permits for me to access to put these cattle for five months out of the year. There is not other permits for me to access to put these cattle for five months out of the year. What am I supposed to do? So please consider that as you're looking at a proposed land bill in that creating business with a new mine versus the businesses that have been here for generations that continue to support and advocate for environmental safety and have a business that uses that environment effectively and safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Judith Harker. Judith Harker, resident of Smith Valley. I have several points to make. First, I'm not against the proposed or what I know about the proposed lands bill. I've only seen some suggested portions of it, but I have nothing against improving parkland, water systems, rodeo grounds in the north part of the county. Those parts should indeed be included and I look forward to seeing the final draft of the of the lands bill. My only objection is the inclusion of the 23,000 acres, 40 square miles, to be turned over to the county for sale to Hud Bay Mine. I'm also not necessarily against the Hud Bay Mine, nor was I against Pumpkin Hollow. If the review by all the federal and state agencies finds that water quality and aquifers of Smith and Mason Valleys will not be harmed and that the livelihood and quality of life of our residents and our agricultural producers is preserved, then I don't really have a problem with Hud Bay Mine either. But when a mine is on public land and to get that assurance about the preservation of our quality of life, Hud Bay must remain on public land. We must have the oversight by both our federal and our state agencies. And they both work together. Okay. This is excerpt excerpt from the BLM Surface Management Handbook, Chapter Four, Covering Oversight and Application for Months. These are the new regs from the state, Section 519A of the NAC, covering mine applications and the new regulations about affidavit good standing for for mines. BLM, both BLM and NDP, the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, work together when a mine on public land applies for a permit. And this is standard practice. For example, this kind of strict information that requires an environmental impact statement and regulation of the mine operation plan, BLM does a great job of that. And NDP, the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, accepts the BLM findings. The state regs now cover, like you said, requiring that the mine operator files an affidavit affidavit that they are in good standing. BLM does not address that issue. They accept what the state finds. So both BLM and NDP oversight is essential. A mine this vast has to have an EIS, an environmental impact statement. It's just foolhardy to strip away our protection, toss us in the garbage.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, last sentence. Hud Bay must go through the standard application process.
Your time is up.
And not evade the EIS. Thanks.
Thank you.
Let me just write my name.
We have one hand raised online, Amanda Bernand.
Okay, Amanda.
Good morning, Amanda Bernand. I live in Stagecoach. And I I've listened in on these meetings about the lands bill and I do hear the county saying there's been some negative things said about the representatives, et cetera, which I do not think is appropriate and do not support that. However, I've also heard that there's a lot of misinformation about this bill. And the misinformation is occurring because there is no information out there. I've heard that there's going to be this piece of land or that piece of land. I really don't know what. And that RCI is developing the maps. There's been stakeholder meetings. However, I haven't seen anything online about any possible times for these public workshops. I think that if we could get the public involved to find the actual information, the misinformation would be reduced. And then the public can be involved in this process. I think that a lot of this frustration comes from the fact that the public is not allowed to be involved in this process. I also hear that this is going to be a long-term process, but in, I believe it was a February agenda, it's supposed to be completed June of 2022, which is only three months away. So that isn't a long-term process. So I guess the quicker that we can get these public workshop, these workshops completed and maps on the website, the misinformation will be reduced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't agree with that. Jeff Page County Manager for the record. So I'll address first, Mr. Kenninger brought some some interesting points. Lyon County, if if there's a lands bill, the Board of County Commissioners approves a lands bill and if it includes property for private industrial, commercial enterprise, we don't receive one penny of that. It is sold at fair market value and that funding is returned to the federal government. We don't receive a penny of it. So we don't make a dime off a land. We don't profit. We have been approached by a variety of entities who would like to see property included in the lands bill, both of all of which have a profit motive. It's disingenuous for me to get up here and tell you that a lands bill never has an economic development component. In fact, every lands bill in Lyon County's history has been just that, to build up an economic development component so that we can utilize federal lands to provide people places to live, people places for people to work, those kinds of issues. There's also a large component of the lands bill that's requirement of of federal law that requires conservation of lands for public use. We've looked at that as well. What I'm here to tell you today is there is not, as we speak, any written documentation for a lands bill. Yes, we met with a number of potential stakeholders who have have come to the county requesting to discuss the potential getting a lands bill. We have reached out to other folks since then to get their input. Ms. Fullstone is a perfect example. We we did not realize until such time as Friday, when RCI came to us with a variety of maps to start taking a look at what we what we're hearing people want, who has grazing rights here, who has mining rights here, by state sage grouse issues, wild horse issues. And we're not just talking the south of the county. Believe it or not, north of Stagecoach in Silver Springs, where there hasn't been grass growing for years, is still a huge grazing component that people have grazing rights to. So we're looking at those issues. We're looking at the environmental issues. Hud Bay, I'm not going to comment on what they're going to do or not going to do because they have yet to file an application. They had a a community meeting in Smith Valley to discuss what they plan on doing. Myself and Andrew, Dr. Titus, semi-woman Titus, her husband, Wade Johnson. I can't remember who else. Oh, Commissioner Hawke, they were asked by Hud Bay to go and ask for advice work to go look at the the property where the pit is going to supposedly going to be. They discussed what their thought processes were in the future for the growth of the of the mine, but we have yet to see an application. I don't know, to be quite honest with you, I keep hearing a number between 23,000 and 40,000 acres that Hud Bay supposedly asked them for. All I know is that RCI has GIS information Hud Bay sent to them. I have no idea. I can honestly tell you, I have no idea what it looks like, but words out on a map. We'll have that discussion once they get that portion of it, that portion of it mapped out. Lyon County is not into business, nor does it have any desire to destroy the single discipline that had created this county to begin with, the south end of the county specifically. That is accurate. So we will work with the variety of stakeholders. Once we have better information from the map, nothing's been done from the perspective of any action taken by the Board of County Commissioners or Planning Commission in regards to the lands bill. The county commission is just as much in the dark as I am right now because we're still waiting for all the information that people sent to us to be mapped so we can take a look at it as to whether it makes sense or not. Once those maps are in place, then yes, we will sit down and we will have meetings in each of the communities. We will have everything on the website for people to review and take a look at and make comment on. Similar to our master plan process, we'll have a webpage dedicated to the lands bill so people can make comments with their concern. Specifically what Lyon County itself is looking for. Take all the private entities out of the picture. We're looking for the properties where the Dayton Value Event Center is. That's a BLM lease that we have for 99 years. And every 99 years we have to renew it. I have four or five communication tower sites up on mountain tops. I would like to have in our name that we own outright that we can take care of. I don't have to deal with the Forest Service and the BLM on a regular basis, making sure that we're updated. Because what happens is somebody new comes along, you get a piece of mail that says your your renewal is due, nobody knows what it's about. And then 10 years later, BLM's not or Forest Service is knocking on the door, you need to fix this or remove your tower. So we want to get those things taken care of. The library, the senior center in Dayton, that on BLM lease lands, the dog park in Dayton sits on BLM lease land. We have about 40, 60 acres outside of Fernley that used to be the Fernley landfill that we'd like to get back. And eventually utilize that as a landfill operation again so that we're not plugging up what's going on in Story County. Eventually, that that landfill is going to run out of room. You're going to have someplace to dispose of our trash and our garbage. It's out in the middle of nowhere. You can't utilize for any other use because nobody wants to build on it from a landfill. So it makes sense. I don't know what the private sector is asking for yet because we have not seen that mapped out. We're looking at conservation, for lack of a better term, conservation easements along the Carson River. There's some property owners out there who the rumor is, is that the county is going to give them 240 acres so they can do whatever they want to do. No, we want a portion of that land in the lands bill so that they can have active access to the property and use the rest of it as a conservation easement along the Carson River so the public can continue to have access where we have control over what type of access that is. So we don't have a bunch of people going out there destroying destroying it with ATVs or trash or those kinds of things. Because right now there's one or two law enforcement specialists for BLM to cover the Carson Ranger District. But we have a little bit more ability to to control those issues. We are looking at specifically the mound house for acreage, not only for economic development purposes, but to get those business, give those businesses the opportunity to look into a municipal sewer system so they can expand their operations. Any business that's currently in mound house right now is on commercial septic. There's only so much they can do. We've had businesses leave mound house to go to Carson, Douglas or Reno because they could not expand their business capabilities because of the limits of commercial septic. So we're looking at what does that look like? Does that mean we're going to build a sewer system tomorrow? No, it does not. But it gives us that option, that ability to compete for the right. It's already industrial complex. Just giving them the ability to to further enhance their operations in the future. So as far as total acreage, I have no clue what we're asking for at this point in time. The actual documentation of the lands bill, I'll be honest with you, won't be done. I mean, we'll we'll make some recommendations. It's going to be the congressional delegation that tells us how we write that bill. That's how the process works. When we did it for, did it the Arrington Economic Development Act or whatever it was eventually wanted being called, it was the congressional delegation that sat down with us and helped us write out what that bill looked like to go from there. And in those things for conservation. In fact, the that particular bill required about 50,000 acres of wilderness in the sweet one. There is no wilderness component to this. Nobody's asking for wilderness component, but we've been informed that we will have to have conservation process in place. Once we have, and it takes time, I mean, RCI is a relatively large company, but we're not their only customer. So it takes time to get that mapping process done. We will sit down, Andrew and I, once we have that done and take a look at it and figure out, is this where we direction we want to go? If it's not, make the necessary judgments and then get out into the public and get their comments as to what they what they like or they don't like or what they want to see included. This is where the process has worked in the past. There there is no easy way of doing this. If I'd gone out to the to the entire county prior to doing this, you know, and then the county commissioner is like, what are you doing? Why are you doing this? We have to go through a public process. We have to seek permission of the board of commissioners to even begin this process, which we did. They gave me direction November of 2020. Well, then why did it take a year before you heard of RCI? We had this pesky little thing called COVID that was limiting our capabilities to get out in front of things, get out in the public. So it took us a year. We got through that process. We entered into a contract with RCI actually December, I believe it was. And we conducted our first of a number of series of stakeholders meetings. And we're going through that process now to identify who else we need to include in stakeholder meetings. We've identified both tribes, state lands, the grazing folks, some other mining folks who have mining claims throughout the county. Some of them are really small clients, some of them are decent sized clients. So we'll reach out to those folks as well to get their input as well. Again, it's a process. We had hoped to have it done by June of 2022. I don't know that we're going to get there. That was had the stars aligned, everything gone the way it's supposed to. We may have been there. And what what we meant by a long haul process is my experience has been with dealing with the Nevada copper bill. It took us seven years of battling with Congress to get it passed. These things don't happen overnight and they will continue to be a challenge for us. We may be like a number of other entities who get their lands go in and it sits in somebody's drawer. There's no guarantee that the lands go will make it to through the legislative process in Congress, let alone get passed. So that is where we are with this process at this point in time. We will be a standing item on the public lands manager advisory board's agenda so that we can provide you folks because you are the folks by county code that are responsible for advising and recommending to the Board of County Commissioners about public lands issues. That's why it's on the agenda. That's why it will continue to be on the agenda. I got several phone calls yesterday. So something new? Nope. What I told you in Smith Valley is still the same today. We have, we don't have anything new to report, but we will keep keep it on the agenda to provide you information. The last thing I'll leave you with is I strongly urge the planning commission and the county commission, whether you believe a landfill is necessary or not, I strongly urge you to keep that opinion to yourself because you are a quasi judicial board. You make decisions on people's land uses and you don't want to leave the perception with the public that you've already made it your mind until you've seen all the facts. So just be careful with that. It does, whether it be this issue or any other planning issue coming before you, it does cloud the record when we get into litigation issues. I will tell you what you need to be, what we need to be forewarned of is once we go public with this, there will be, you will no longer be the residents of Smith Valley voicing their concerns. We will have national environmental groups showing up for and against and trying to dictate what Lyon County wants. That is what we all need to be on the same page. Once we have decided where we're going, we all need to be on the same page. I have watched that process. I know Ms. Fullstone, probably too young to remember, there are people that remember way back when, when we did the first ever wilderness discussion, I went to a meeting in the sheriff's office where Mary Conley, the representative from Senator Reed's office, asked me to escort her out of the building because National Environmental Group came in instead of the 40,000 or 80,000 acres they're looking for. This National Environmental Group basically taken from Smith Valley all the way to Bishop to make the wilderness here. And it got real ugly real quick. So that's we we don't want to get hijacked by national interests. We're looking specifically at what's in the best interest of Lyon County.
Madam Chair, just a comment. I I just wanted to thank you, Jeff, for you basically taking this on because we were under the impression early on that it was going to be the planning commission that had to write Lyon County's planning, I I mean, public lands policy. We don't have the expertise to do that. And so I appreciate that you've contracted with somebody who does have that expertise.
So let me let me talk about, because I've been asked, why RCI? Why not somebody else? One, Jeremy Drew, for those who don't know, I've known Jeremy for a long time. More importantly, I've known his father for a long time. I find Jeremy being a man of great integrity, a man who will call a spade a spade and pardon expression, I won't feed you full of BS. He will flat tell you what what the law says, what what we're allowed to do, what we're not allowed to do. Number two, RC has a proven record over the last 25, 30 years of dealing with public lands issues, representing local governments' interests and ensuring that Representing local government's interests and ensuring that uh, as best as possible that we have a, the best scenario for local government and dealing with federal land manager agencies. Their most recent experience has been dealing with the expansion of the Fallon Lake, Fallon Lake water station. And those challenges. They helped us with the Lyon, the Arrington slash Lyon County Economic Recovery Bill, which was Nevada Copper. They're helping a variety of other entities with, with lands. Far we chose, there are other folks out there. But I'd rather have folks who actually live in Nevada, who understand Nevada issues. Than some consultant from San Francisco who has no clue what the issues in Lyon County for Nevada are. So that's why we've done with RCI. Any other questions, comments or concerns?
Anything? Michael? Sean? Connie? Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you. Do I take all the pens again?
Is there any more public comment?
Patricia Swain, I am a resident of Smith Valley. Um, I am concerned about the water usage that Hud Bay claims they will require, which is eight to fifteen thousand acre feet per year. Not to be recharged into the aquifer per Hud Bay. Uh, the, as I understand it, the annual yield of Smith Valley is sixteen thousand acre feet about. Uh, and it has dropped eleven feet in the last year. So therefore I'm very concerned about the mine utilizing the water that is currently being used by agriculture religious that provide. Agriculture provides a very stable environment for the, for the valley. There are multi-generational families in agriculture. I see, I hate to see that get stripped away. That's just my wish. Business, I, I realize that this is the third largest copper deposit in the country. And that somebody's going to go after it. But I firmly believe that the residents of Smith Valley deserve the full protection of federal and state agencies. And that's why it should be kept on public land and not in the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, now there's two pants.
You can only provide public comment one time.
Not at the beginning and the end of maybe?
No. We're still under the same public comment.
Well, I do want to apologize if I was wrong about where the money goes for the sale of the land. I assumed it went into the county.
Thank you. Public comment, come on up.
My name is Matt Swain, I'm a resident of Smith Valley. And I want to make it clear that I have no objection to the many minor uses that Mr. Page delineated for the lands bill. There are all kinds of productive and good, good things to do in that regard. But is the mine is one thing I take an issue with. Uh, this is the, as my wife said, this is the third largest untapped uh, ore body in the United States. Uh, certainly being an ore body of that size, Hud Bay can make a profit on this following all of the legitimate requirements set down by the BLM and the EPA. Including all the EIRs that are required. And I don't think that it's in our best interest to knock down hurdles for them. Uh, which is what would happen if we do this under a lands bill. So uh, you know, the economic benefits that a mine like this will bring to the cattle, county are readily quantifiable. But the quality of life effects and, and various other environmental concerns and whatnot. And I, I want to make it clear, I'm not against mining. You know, we've all got electronics, we've all got, we know that modern life is made possible by, in no small part by copper. So we've got to do that. And I don't think getting, getting it from China is a good source. But we've got to do this very, very carefully because the results of what we do here are going to be around for many, many generations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carol Temples, Smith Valley. This is my pen. Um, there will be economic development, whether or not the mine is part of the land bill. It'll just be under environmental protection. Um, the county can take mining out of the land bill. No stakeholder meetings are planned at this time. Uh, Jerry Bustamante from Hud Bay sent an email stating that they want twenty-three thousand acres, which is forty square miles. So that's a fact.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to item ten, action items. Do we have any action items? Thank you. Uh, item eleven, staff update on public lands bill.
Actually, this is Andrew Haskin for the record. I believe Jeff already gave the
Okay.
The review and discussion, so.
Okay, board member, Congress, Audrey, do you have anything?
Norita. Why do you have a question? Um, so this email Jeff, that's being spoke of, have you seen or heard of anything of that email?
Jeff Page, kind of matter of record, so I have, I've had a number of correspondences with, with Hud Bay. Um, I've never seen any acreage issues and we may have seen something. Um, Andrew is actually the point, congratulations. The, the point man for, for this project. Um, but I don't doubt that Hud Bay has sent information off people who requested it. Um, the one thing about Hud Bay that I have, I do appreciate, and for the audience's identification, I'm not a huge fan of large corporations and some of the things that they do. Um, but we informed Hud Bay when they came to us some time ago about what they're looking at doing. That they needed to follow the same suit that Tim Dyer and Greg French did with Nevada Copper. And that was get out in front of this as soon as possible, start talking to people. Let, be honest with them, let them know what they're doing. And thus far, um, they have, have done just, just that. So I have not received any specific information. Our contractor has. But I have no idea what, what, what they've actually proposed for acreage. Um, I've heard, heard things and I don't, I don't judge anything until we get the final map to uh, put out as a draft in public.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, do you have any comments?
No.
Sean?
No.
Connie? Okay. Future agenda items, do we have any that we know? Again, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Can, can he speak again? Yes.
Yeah, I believe so, since this is a separate
Yep.
Public participation.
Okay.
My meeting confused. I'd just like to say that uh, the public comments over at the Smith Valley Advisory Board last week and today, Mr. Page has stated, nobody's put in any application yet. It's not happening. Well, nobody mining company, meaning nobody, is going to put in the application till they find out if they're in the lands bill or not. So to say that we're expecting somebody to put in an application is silly. Because they have to wait to find out where, where they're going to be. Are they going to be operating on federal land? Or are they going to be operating on land that becomes their private property? And like others have said, once that land becomes their private property, we lose those federal regulations. When you look at the Anaconda Mine and the mess it's in. We shouldn't allow any less regulation. We should. And then it was really unclear, Jeff almost said that they reached out to Hud Bay. And then he corrected himself and said, well, when they came to us, I'd really like to know where that process started. We are going to get the good of the economic development of the Hud Bay mine. Whether they're on federal land or private land. So the economic development is not a concern that's going to happen. They don't have to have private land. They could start their permitting process tomorrow.
Thank you. Did you write your name? Okay, okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to reconvene as the Lyon County Planning Commission. Item fifteen, staff comments and commissioner comments.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. Um, just want to provide an update on actions that the board took at the last Board of County Commissioners meeting on March third. Um, there was two planning items that came up. One was an extension of time on a tentative subdivision map for for the traditions project phase one, I believe, in Dayton. Um, that was approved, uh, the, the extension of time was approved for one year. Uh, I believe that was unanimous. And then um, the Vidler project that came before this board last month, they asked for a continuance to gather some more information and that was granted as well unanimously. We also heard a, a business impact statement for um, for the cannabis consumption lounge ordinance that'll be before the board uh, next week. And so that was um, that was approved. Or I mean, that, that was just presentation only. And then there was also a discussion and on the solid waste franchise agreement. And that was the, the board did award that franchise agreement, so it's all sissies of waste. That's it. Anybody have any questions?
Commissioner comments, Audrey?
I, I did have a question. I am getting older, but did that, um, the traditions come to us for the extension of time? Do you recall that? I don't recall that.
I, I don't believe it came to the planning commission, that's a board action.
Okay, all right.
Because it was already, the tentative map was already recommended to be approved by the
No. Anyone on this end have any comments? Okay.
Right.
I do have one comment. Andrew, I, I, this board has talked a couple of times about the bridge. And I think Audrey made a clear comment that I stick into my mind is that bridge concept is going to come up each and every meeting. As long as we could have anything to do with land development thing. So when we get the workshop together, can we make sure the planning commission is invited to that workshop? So that we're all participants in that conversation about the bridge or emergency access.
If, if we, if we do that, then we will have to notice it as a joint planning commission and board of commissioners workshop. If we have a, a quorum of the, of the planning commissioners there, so just be aware of that.
I do have one comment, we have an open meeting training come up, coming up, don't we? For any of those that need to be attending that.
Correct.
That's March twenty-third at six o'clock.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would like to uh, address one issue with the planning commission. Um, and no, you're not in trouble. But I, I also have to address it with, with my, my board as well and advisory boards and all those that have anything to do with planning decisions, whether they be recommendations for approval, denial or continuance. Starting at the advisory board level, working all the way to the county commission. When you make a motion to approve, deny and continue. Staff provides you with information to make that motion. I strongly suggest if the staff has recommended approval and you don't like it. That you look at those discussion points that the staff has provided you to either continue or deny the application and make sure that you've had, have discussed those issues as a planning commission. Before you make the motion. If you have other findings or requirements that you want added to um, an approval. Then bring that up during the planning commission process and have those discussions. The reason why it's important is, and I don't want to sound like I'm saying the planning commission's not important. Ninety percent of the time, your, your decisions go before the board of county commissioners. So they're the final decision maker. But if you have voted five to two to recommend denial of something. And my board of county commissioners then votes four to one, three to two, or five to zero to deny it. And we go to judicial review. There's a record of fact that goes along with that, that the district attorney and the attorneys on our side have to go. We want good, strong records of fact going to court to support the decision of the county commission as made. When we don't have that, that's where we're running into problems in court cases. Or worst case scenario, the planning commission recommends, recommends approval seven to zero. And the county commission kills it five to zero. We need to have a strong record of what was taking place and why. What the testimony was, those kinds of things. So I'm just, want, want to remind the planning commission that that's why we provide you in the staff report. Those various options of approval, denial and continuance. So that we, you have something to work off of and make sure that you look at it and you have at least discussed those um, reasons why you're voting to deny or approve, um, so that it makes a good solid record. Nobody's in trouble here. I just want to remind you from the legal perspective, um, because we're, we're getting into the built, this soy season in a variety of ways. Um, yesterday, everybody started filing for office. So soy season number one. Things are warming up, people, people are looking at moving and getting out of the big cities and coming to rural Nevada. So we're entering the soy season. The developers we're dealing with today are large corporations who have strong legal firms. And they're not afraid of, we've discovered, they're not afraid of going to court. So we want to make sure that the facts that we have going into court help justify what we've done, what action we've taken. And that we're on a good solid ground. Okay, so just think about, if something is bothering you about an application coming before you. Look at what, what that denial letter is. Or if staff's recommended denial and you want to approve it, then look at what, what those facts are. And make sure you discuss those as a planning commission, um, those issues so that we have a clean record going, going forward in the court. I hate that based our decisions upon. I don't want you to ever make a decision based upon you want to get sued. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that if we do get sued, make sure we discuss those issues that you're, you're voting on to um, uh, make your recommendation. That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
You said the workshop is March twenty-third at six?
Yeah. Here.
Here.
Okay.
Zoom link? Okay. And at six PM?
Try to manage, I forgot.
Go ahead.
Um, just so you're aware, um, as you started the meeting out today, it said, meeting is recording. Effective last month, planning commission meetings, county commission meetings are now going to a Lyon County YouTube page. So public has access to them. So if you get questions a week after, maybe if somebody's watched YouTube, just so you're aware that the public now is able to see what's put in action statement.
Thank you. Item sixteen, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised until this item of the agenda, under this item of the agenda, until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we are adjourned.